Before we start, would you please stay with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance just to divide the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have Pastor Lake here. Mr. Clerk, would you mind praying for us, please?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity together this morning. We thank you for the safe passage this morning as we travel around on our county roads and the discretion of our leaders to make an effort for safety at that. So, Heavenly Fathers, we go about the business of the county today. We ask your guidance and your compassion all said done. And it's like the opportunity to be here to serve the people of Henshaw County. We ask your blessing on all that. Jesus' name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen. First item on the agenda is the President and Commissioners' reports. I'm sorry. Approval of the... Boy, this note has got me in a bind here. Before we get on to the Commissioners' reports, all the Commissioners received a digital copy of the minutes, and I did briefly read through those earlier.
I would move that we approve those as presented, Mr. President.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to Presidents and Commissioners' reports. The Health Department does send us a monthly briefing, which the Clerk sent out to you gentlemen, and we haven't done that update in a little while, so bear with me. Didn't want to go over that briefly. So, we're still providing free, at-home test kits to individuals in the community, along with businesses, schools, and nursing homes, and I do believe we still have some here in the courthouse downstairs. We have had zero COVID-related deaths in January. Our total since the start of COVID 2020 was 77 total deaths. We have completed our community flu clinics throughout the county and continue to offer flu shots and RSV shots daily at the Health Department by appointment. We are doing monthly in-person food classes at the Health Department, along with online services, and we are in the process of changing from West Virginia OT to GST for all of our computer technical support services, which the Commission knows about. We had a meeting with GST. Other than that, did speak with Dana Haught, Director of the Committee on Aging, called me yesterday, and that's Commissioner Eglinger's board now, but before I left there, we had organized an initiative or project to expand the kitchen there. It's now being mandated that we have to have sit-down meals there five days a week through the Committee on Aging, so for that kitchen expansion, that's going to be really hard, being that's the most vital kitchen in the county for providing the grab-and-go, the sit-down meals, and the meals on wheels. So, I reached out to the Chief of Romney Fire and the President over there, trying to find a remedy for a kitchen that the Committee on Aging can use until their kitchen renovation is complete. So, I got Director Haught and Romney Fire in communication. They really have been accommodating, and they plan to allow us to use their kitchen, but now I believe we're going to have to use their hall as well, Commissioner. And I told you a little bit about that, but just giving you an update that I did put them two in connection there. But yes, moving on, I did have a couple meetings at length with our grant writer over our ARP organization, as did the other two Commissioners. So, we're getting organized and seeing what fruits are coming of these projects we've approved, and seeing where the allocations stand, and also motivating those that maybe aren't putting their money to work to put those monies to work for the people. I also met with Darren Taylor over the phone. We talked a little bit budget and grants, and he's here today, so I won't labor over that. I did have a meeting with the Development Authority and the Parks and Rec Head, Mr. Rinker and Mr. Brill, and Rebecca Haught and John Todd Haught were also there, just to sort of come up with some ideas on the transfer of that property if it is feasible. I do believe it's a good idea that although the Parks and Rec is a viable corporation, they, you know, can collect rents in their buildings, but being the types of entities that are in there, I do believe it is a good idea for organizational purposes that the Development Authority be involved if we can, but as with both institutions, money is always... The issue in the Development Authority is worried about taking on structural roof and different projects that we know that they wouldn't be able to afford. So, we've got all the brains firing on all cylinders to come up with ideas. I encourage them to maybe do some fundraisers. As one Commissioner, I'm a hand-up, not a hand-out kind of guy. I would like to see them come up with some money on their own if they're going to... Either one of those entities is going to come to us for further funding to fix their buildings. I do know that we've offered bitty-bitty for free, and, you know, that's a great thing, but like I said, a hand-up, not a hand-out. Me personally, all my kids are in those sports, you know, and I remember when I was younger, it was, I think, two, two or three bucks, you know, which I gave willingly. So anyways, not to... I don't want to get off on a rabbit hole here, but we're really working on that, and I think we have some good brains involved in that. And like I said, it always looks better to me if you come to me with pro... Or come to me with solutions instead of problems. But anyways, I did speak to Jessica Stewart from Springfield Rescue, ran into her yesterday, and we spoke for about an hour, talked about EMS and things, and her and her husband want to be more involved, so that was a good meeting. We also had Board of Equalization in Review. We had a couple cases with that. Nothing too extensive there to report on. We settled both of those topics. Let's see here. Did speak with the Sheriff of Budget Concerns, which Commissioner Eglinger did as well. I spoke with the Circuit Clerk of Parking Concerns, and then I did speak with Becky Miller and Isaac Lewis from the Hampshire High School FFA, which we will address here later on the agenda. Also, Judge Carle reached out to me and Judge Williams to have an invite to attend the drug court graduations. I do know that that's a, sometimes a tough topic for conservatives, being that recovery isn't always such a fruitful path. We see a lot of relapsing and things, but it is something that I have supported, and I do want to give the public and Commissioners some of the reasons why I do feel that this is a fruitful affair for our county in a lot of different ways. Just to give you a little briefing here on the statistics, the number of participants since inception, 261. The number of previous graduates, 110. The number of active participants, 25. The total number of drug-free babies born while mother was in drug court, 28. Total number of community service hours completed by current participants, 6,758 hours. Average age of first use of alcohol and drugs, 15. Total number of children who currently have parents involved in their lives because of drug court, almost 40. Total current number of combined clean days for active participants, 8,525 days. Value of community service hours provided by current participants calculated at minimum wage, $60,000. Total number of participants who have earned their GED while in drug court, 23. Total number of participants who have gone on to higher education programs, 11. Total number of current graduates and participants who are employed, 18. Gentlemen, that's all I have for my reports. Vice President Eglinger, do you have a report today?
I have a couple quick things, Mr. President. You had touched on a few things. You know, I did meet with the grant writer, review an ARP a couple different times, also with the Sheriff and some different budget items, which we will be reviewing in detail in March. A lot of the things I worked on from the office there are going to be on the agenda, so I'll wait there. I'll add on to the meals that you were talking about using the fire hall and stuff, and I appreciate the transition there. Commissioner Cannon and I have switched, and I just took on that board a month ago, but I did promise that we would put those bids back out for that kitchen remodeling down there, and Mr. Haught had done that for us a couple weeks ago. So, hopefully, we can get bids this time, and I encourage the board members, as well as Mr. Haught, to encourage any local guys to put a bid in for that. Only other thing that Commissioner Cannon didn't touch on, or was I did do a site visit yesterday concerning our Board of Equalization to look at the value of a building, and spent a couple hours yesterday, and I'll report to the Commissioners during our BOE meeting, which will follow this meeting. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. You want to address it?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. Yeah, and thank you for getting out there in the field with Deputy Assessor, and yeah, that was a long overdue meeting there. I'm glad we got it worked out. Commissioner Haught, did you have a report today, sir?
Yeah, one of the first things I done, well, after our last meeting, was I went to the North River Valley Volunteer Park Company, our department, and so in, all their new officers as a county commissioner, and it was a very pleasant experience. We had a great meal, and they had a very good ceremony. I attended, I have attended two budget meetings with Region Eight, and matter of fact, the last one was yesterday, and we've got recommendations for the new budget to present to the Region Eight Council at the next meeting. Attended the Central Hampshire meeting last Wednesday, I believe, and mainly the Phase One and Two Perdesfield Project is, should be completed, I think, within the next two to three weeks, which is a very positive note. Of course, it never happens as quick as we'd like it to happen, but it's going to be, should be done within the next two to three weeks. The other thing I wanted, we have, we had a Board of Review scheduled for 11 o'clock, so I think we should address how we're going to handle that at 11, whether we want to recess the County Commission meeting, or whether we want to... Since we don't have any appointments, I would suggest that we wait till after the County Commission meeting is over and then do a Board of Review, since we don't have any appointments other than the Assessor.
I spoke with the Assessor this morning, and she seemed to be agreeing with that.
Oh, okay, okay. Other than that, I just want to make a comment about your day report. And I agree with, I mean, I understand what you said. Matter of fact, I was on the Commission when I met with Hardy County, and we first started the day report. It was just Hardy and Hampshire, and I was in favor of that. But, and you've heard me say this a million times, and I'm going to say it again. This, a lot of these problems would be going if we had our family foundation back. And I keep preaching that, and I know I don't know how to fix that, but that's one of the things I feel is, you know, we don't have a family foundation as we used to have, and it really affects us. And like I said, that don't fix the problem, but that's just my opinion. I think that's, I think that's all I have, David.
Yeah, I mean, I think the research proves that that's a pretty direct correlation with the breakdown of the father in the home and all of the things that tears apart his families lead to economic struggles as adults, relational, interpersonal relationship struggles. It's just, actually, interestingly enough, I was just looking at a study, it was a few weeks ago, and it was a study on the father in the home and the family nucleus, and, you know, children without, children with just their mother, their success rates, children with their, just their father, their success rates, and children with their father and their mother, both. It's a pretty astronomical difference, how well or how much better children fare as they grow older. But anyways, moving on here, Convention and Visitors Bureau President, Mrs. McMasters, and Director Lad, you have a funding request today. If you please come forward. Excellent. Thank you.
And I forgot to tell you, Ralph Ronkin and I visited Region Eight up at Franklin, where they have a waste program, and we looked at some of the different ways that they handle the plastics and paper. So, we was up there, that was last Thursday, I believe, yeah. And it was a very good meeting. Ralph and I talked about that a good bit. Well, matter of fact, Ralph done the most talking.
I don't believe that.
But anyway, it's, they really have a, there in Franklin, they got a good program, so it was something that we learned.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for seeing us this morning. And I would like to say to you that I very much appreciate the support you have shown to the Convention Visitors Bureau over the last few years. We are a very different organization than we were before we got your vote of confidence to help us hire an executive director and get accredited. And you know, as well as I do, from all the things that you see that are happening in the county, that she's doing a super job, but none of that would have happened. We probably wouldn't even have had a visitor center if you hadn't stepped up then, so thank you very much. I really appreciate that vote of confidence. And we have given you the annual report. I'm going to let Tina take you through that or answer any questions you have.
Yeah, the annual report is, there are figures mixed, and that first page, it discusses West Virginia Association of CBBS. So, on page three, those numbers are all of us together who are members, and those are all of the accredited CBBS. When you skip over to pages four and five, that hones in more on us as a county, everything that we've done. I've told PEG that since this is fiscal year 2223, some of this is already outdated. We've grown in a lot of ways since then, but of course, our two big events that the CBB does are the Farm Crawl and the Potomac Highlands Sportsman and Outdoor Show, which is coming up in March. We are members of Mid-Atlantic Tourism, Public Relations Alliance, WBA-CBB, WBHTA. We are now members of the Southeastern Tourism Society. Also, we have partnerships with AFNHA and West Virginia Department of Tourism. The analytics on page five are from the internet, from our website. There are lots, there's lots of data and lots of analytics, so anything specific that you all were ever curious about, let me know, and I could pull reports. Our paid media, we have print ads in West Virginia Living. We're continuing with that this year. We have a half-page ad in wonderful West Virginia Magazine, which should be in February's issue. That's for our outdoor show. For our free media, or our earned media, which is on page six, which actually means free media, we've earned that media, but we're not paying for it. It lists all of the articles that we had 2223. The Hampshire Review is also very friendly towards us. It shows our growth on page seven in Hampshire County, and this is based on, this is information from West Virginia Tourism and Dean Runyon. It shows Hampshire County is collecting 37.1 million in tourism, and 390 jobs are related to tourism here in our county. And then on the back page, it shows us by the numbers. It shows our Facebook followers is 3185, so actually, at this point, we're just about 1,000 above that. We're a little over 4,000 Facebook followers. We have the TikTok. We have the Instagram, and I know a lot of people don't care for TikTok. There's someone in my household who will not get on the TikTok, but I'm like, West Virginia Tourism tells us we have to do the TikTok, so we do. Not all the time, but we have Instagram. We have Twitter. We're on LinkedIn now, so any type of outreach we can do that is effective and is, you know, cost savings, we try to do that. And yeah, above the chart breaks down, again, on that last page, it shows us at 37.1 million. We are part of the Potomac Highlands, so we're part of eight counties, so for our eight counties, it's 406.2 million. We have room to grow, and we're working on that. We're planning on doing a training in mid-April to invite our tourism partners. Our tourism partners would be like our local hotel, motel, the resorts, Airbnb owners, restaurants, shops, anyone whose business is dependent upon tourism, maybe not fully dependent on tourism, but to fill up our beds, we need to have attractions here to pull people in. So, we want to do a little bit of training, let people know what's available through us, through West Virginia Tourism, other industry training, some hospitality stuff. Hopefully, it'll lead into doing at least quarterly sessions with those tourism partners to help them feel comfortable, more comfortable with things like social media, you know. And I know that a lot of our folks here in Hampshire County have done a really good job of still remaining open after COVID, and a lot of them are still working really hard because they're dealing with the employment issues. So, it's hard. I know that they're stretched thin, so some of these easy ideas may not be that easy for them, but we want to let them know that, you know, we're here for them and try to help them in any way we can. And our funding request today is for the same amount that it's been for the last couple of years, which would be in addition, 30,000 more from the lodging tax than what we would normally get, which is 50, 50% of the lodging tax collected. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for being conservative and with what you have, doing an amazing job. I had a quick question, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I had it written down. What was the approximate turnout of the outdoor show last year?
So, the outdoor show, we gave out wristbands, and I just, I was just emailing my scouts about this. The Boy Scouts worked the gate for us, and I thought that some folks had made it through without wristbands, and they did, but the wristbands that we gave out didn't correlate with the money that we took in. So, on Saturday, Sunday was a, was a, the whole, that weekend was freezing, but the money amounted to like 2,000 people, and I thought that I had the little wristbands in here somewhere, but the bulk of those people were there on Saturday, because Sunday, people were, I think that it snowed a little... It was kind of like this morning, so people were like, yeah, we're not, we're not coming up there. But yeah, we had like 2,000 last year, and already on my event page this year, I've had like 800 responses. And, you know, it's curious, see, I had a different, I should have brought my different report, but I think that I showed you all that last year. Like my, I did a digital guide for the outdoor show, and I do a digital guide for the holidays. The outdoor show digital guide blew away the holiday digital guide, which I kind of wasn't expecting, because when, you know, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to offend anyone, but you know, when you're thinking about guys that are just into hunting and fishing, you don't think they'd be clicking on those digital guides, right? But I mean, this is a slow time of the year for them, so. But we've already had a lot of, a lot of interest this year. We have at least three new vendors coming, and they all reached out to me. Yeah, so we're excited. I'm just starting to gear up and shift gears and work on that, because it's a little bit different shifting from like holiday stuff to CBB stuff, and then getting in like the hunting and fishing, you know, mode. But yeah, we're getting sponsors. The Bank of Romney is going to be a sponsor this year. FNB is going to sponsor it. And the local, the Potomac Highlands chapter of the NWTF, they are going to do their turkey calling show again this year. That was like a big draw last year. So, we mainly need those sponsors to cover those prizes, because that calling contest is a big deal, and it's, the prize money is around 2,600, and I believe there are 18 different awards given.
Wow.
Yeah.
And I'd like, also like to mention and commend you guys. One of the best things that I think you guys do is you go to other places, and you go to Charleston, and you brainstorm with other colleagues in other counties, and you, you know, you take what they've had success with and bring it here, and maybe study what they haven't had so much success with, and, you know. Did you, are you familiar with the Great American Outdoor Show, the one that's in Harris?
Yes, yes.
I think it's also smart that, you know, we schedule ours a little bit later, because I know we've gained a lot of people.
Well, that's why we did, yes. Well, I confirmed with local hunters before we planned this date, so this date was because of them. When we came in behind, Charleston has a big show at the end of, well, like the third weekend in January, because I went to it last year. Morgantown has a show the week before us, no, the week after us, and I believe Somersville is the week before us. So, yes, I learned these things, that you have to plan them out, because number one, your vendors are all going to be at those established shows, and your people as well, so. But, you know, we don't have anything in our area like it, so it's nice for our locals as well.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
I just want to say I'm the Commissioner that has the pleasure of sitting on the board with the, with our CBB, and we have grown in a positive way over the last couple of years. And, you know, as a Commissioner, and the, all three of us Commissioners get to see the spreadsheets and the books of the county, and tourism is a, is always a positive on your spreadsheet, because people come in, they spend money, and then they leave, which makes it easier for us three to manage. So, to me, you know, CBB is a good investment, and tourism, especially with the county like ours, is a good investment. So, thank you, ladies, for your hard work, and it's starting to really show here the last couple of years.
And I'd like to echo that. We, you know, we've, we've dealt with CBB for a lot of years, and in the last four or five, you guys have really, you've really made this a very successful bureau, and it came along with our accreditation and so forth, but it's, I mean, it's amazing what we've done, or you guys have done the last couple, three years, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, and we plan on continuing to grow. Yes, we do. Tina deserves the credit for that, for all of these wonderful ideas. Her talent at looking forward and transferring it to us has been so very helpful to us.
But you know, it's not that hard. We got a lot going on in this county, and the lady coming to train us for the tourism training and everything, I had heard her speak somewhere, and we were going over everything, and it happens with everyone that I'm speaking with or doing interviews with. They're like, you guys are like a hidden gem, and I'm like, I know. So, we need to, you know, like I've said this before, you know, there's no reason why we, maybe we're not going to be on the same level as a county with a ski resort, right, but we can certainly... But we can certainly be on the same level as some of the other counties surrounding us that have really...
I like the hidden gem analogy.
Yeah.
Excellent, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, gentlemen, this time I entertain a motion to approve the funding request as presented.
Mr. President, I move to approve the funding request submitted from the CBB contingent upon our revenue and as we do our budget. We've always been able to do that, but I always like to throw that in there just in case we don't, we don't have any money.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, I'll second that motion, and I'll just further add that budget time is coming up, so we realize you guys are giving us an advance notice, but yes, hinging upon the outlook of the budget that we hopefully fund as usual.
I have a motion and a second to approve the funding request as presented by the CBB, depending upon availability of funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
We're scurrying along here. Mr. Clerk, the mayor not coming in today?
No, I'm taking a minute.
Thank you.
Oh, did, we have a little window here. Want to move right along?
Well, they're at 9:30.
Okay.
Peg's right here, yeah.
Okay. Well, since you're already here. How you doing, Lynn?
Sorry that we came back from Florida.
See, you got suntanned.
Thank you for your town birthday, and thank you last year.
Okay, sorry. Last year, we requested an increase in the funds you've been giving us, and that was very helpful. We had gone through a number, some years where we didn't have the festival, and those contracts had transferred over. So the difference between the cost then and the cost last year was significant, so that was very helpful to us. We, the festival last year was a factor of weather, and we're going to go through the survey results for you because we always do a survey and try to analyze that data when we decide what to do the next year. So we will be looking at the survey data to make decisions shortly about what kinds of things we might include. But I would say that what happened to us with a really cold rainy day of the day of our festival meant that the things that did very well were the things that were inside. We postponed other things, and they were very popular on the date, the second date, the makeup date. So it was, it was down in attendance, but overall, there were some pluses. For example, the history. The history was in the dining hall, it's pouring down rain, and it's cold, so people who were there just stayed for session after session, and we had, we had better attendance for our history sessions than we've ever had. Each of the sessions went very well, so Lynn is the one who puts this data together. If you have any questions, I'm sure he can help you with those.
The one note that I would add is, is that an effort was made this year to increase our advertising on Facebook, and the results would suggest that that did help us. And Logan actually helped with that, so it was, it was a good effort. And it, I always want to caution anybody who looks at statistics, is that it depends heavily on what responses you get. And we got probably a few less responses this past year than we have in the past, but still a fair representation, and it would, with that caveat, it does show that we're drawing from outside the county a little bit, so that's, that's helpful.
So the CBB, does Tina help you with this, I mean, as far as advertising or?
Yeah.
CBB advertises for all of the festivals and groups, yes. We get the same kind of treatment, there's no favoritism, but yes, they do their website, and CBB boosts this, I'm sorry, they boost our, or they repost our Facebook pace, post very diligently, Tina does, so that, and the Facebook posts that we had this past year were well-written. They were focused on events like each of the history things and each of the music people, and she was, CBB was very good about reposting those. CBB helps organizations in lots of ways. Now, years ago, there was an opportunity with the state where CBB could write a grant and give money or make actual expenditures for the individual festivals, but it's set up differently. The state doesn't do that kind of thing anymore, so, but we do benefit greatly from their exposure.
I recognize that it's anecdotal, but I love these little stories, like a gentleman and his son came up to me at the beginning of the day and said, you're still going to have it, right? We came all the way from Annandale so that my son could participate in the kids' activities. Anecdotal, but, but kind of nice to have people come up to you like that.
That's awesome. That's great.
We have people who say that their, their young person, their teenager, made it a point for them to come because they wanted to hear a certain history talk. So the history talks have actually done well. People look forward to them from year to year.
We had a particularly big drawing at the towns' talk on the book that they're writing on the Cape and Bridge. That talk was probably the best attended that we had of all the, all the talks.
I see food continues to be the largest attraction. Will the vendors be similar to last year or more, or?
We are...
A little too far away to know yet.
We're, it's a little early for us. We're in our planning process, but I would think so. It's not an easy thing, though, sometimes, to get the food vendors because that's a popular time of the year, and, and so sometimes it's, it's difficult. We have to work at it, but I would expect the same kind of thing, yes.
We did have a second day. I mean, the first day got the car show, it was raining, nobody wants to bring their cars out on a rainy day, so the, that and a couple of things were delayed for a couple of weeks, and we were able to get food vendors to come out at the last minute to participate in the second, second day.
And the lumberjack attraction seems to be really taking off.
Yes.
That's a great addition.
We got extremely lucky there that we were able to get a tent, a huge tent, at the last minute, so that the whole competition was done under a tent, so we didn't give a hoot whether it rained or not.
I actually deal with a couple, sawmill for lumbering things, and I've got a couple buddies that they're already practicing. See them out there with their saws, practicing. It definitely takes some precision.
Well, it's a little unusual. I mean, you don't, you see, a lot of the things that we do, you'll see at other festivals in the county, but not the lumberjack, as far as I know. And Brian Flanagan works with a group from Kingwood County, I believe it is, to bring those guys here, people, not just guys, to compete in that. But, and that would have been a difficult thing to reschedule because they were back-to-back with some other event, and that's why we worked to get a tent and have that one on schedule.
Great, yeah, absolutely. Make it more spectacle. Gentlemen, do you have anything further?
No, I move that we approve the request from the Cambridge Founders Day Festival, $5,000, and the same caveat, with contingency on our funding.
Do I hear?
Done every year. I mean, that's the way we've done it, and we've always been able to do it, so.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the funding request by the Founders Day Festival for $5,000, depending on availability of funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And we all know we can't control the weather.
That's right.
We, it didn't fare, and you might have one day, two days, that you had rain or this and that, and there's just no way we can...
We've had weather events the last two years, so we're kind of going to be focusing on what we can do that, that does give us cover as much as we can, you know, inside various places, so, yes.
If anything, I could suggest an amendment to that motion, that we have good weather.
You can pray for that. Quakers can pray for that.
We can all pray for that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for your...
Thank you all for coming in. Thank you for all the time you volunteered at our county.
Thank you so much. Right, have a good day.
Moving on, gentlemen. We have a 9:45 Veterans Memorial regarding a grant for, that the mayor was going to present.
The mayor called and asked yesterday if she could cancel. She just put us a white ready to present today, so.
Okay.
Respect, as you said.
We have three minutes, if you'd like to...
I had a letter that I need the commissioner to sign, the president to sign, confirming that the county clerk's office would like to participate in the records management and preservation grant that's been awarded to us, and we just need to confirm that with that.
It's the same one we, I think, did you see this?
Yeah, yeah, I got the digital copy. If you want to read that. I think we have until, we have a couple of weeks to sign that one.
Just the president's signature. Mr. President, I move we authorize you to sign that document with the Arch Council.
I'll second that motion.
My motion and a second to authorize the president to sign the document as presented. This is a records management and preservation board grant application for the upcoming fiscal year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Above, not below, Mr. Clerk.
The sheriff sent a 911 request for approval of dispatcher.
Simpson as full-time 911 dispatcher.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to give final consent on the Logan Simpson, the new 911 dispatcher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Sheriff also sent two line item budget revision requests. These are to his budget and the Treasury's office budget. Line one to Treasury's office.
Mr. President, I move we approve the request for the budget revision for the Treasury's office from line item for MNR equipment to, to line item for transfer, or transfer of the contract to services for $1,725.
Second?
My motion and a second to approve the line item budget revision for count 404 slash 215. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
President, I move that we also approve the budget revision for the sheriff's office from supplies and materials to the line item 7223 professional services for $3,892.
Second?
My motion and a second to approve the line item 700-341 for supplies and materials by the sheriff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Sheriff also sent a request to have you approve this annual process, approve the deputies as humane officers.
Mr. President, I move we approve the request from the sheriff as naming all the deputies as humane officers for Hampshire County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
My motion and a second to approve the document as presented in accordance with West Virginia State Law 7-10-1, designating humane officers for Hampshire County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on here, we have, unless we have, do you have anything else, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, plenty more, but if you wanted to move people up on the agenda, that would be...
Let's move forward. Mr. Taylor from the South Branch Valley Day Report Criminal Justice Board, how are you this morning?
Very good. Commissioner, thank you. I appreciate everything that you guys do and all of the support that Hampshire County has given towards the South Branch Valley Day Report Centers. Of course, we cover Hampshire, Hardy, and Pendleton Counties, and in the last year, the increase in our services has been astronomical for what we've been able to offer with the funding that we've had between grants and the matching amounts that we've gotten from the counties. Commissioner, hot to speak to what you had to say, as far as the Family Foundation, I couldn't agree more that that is, that's going to be a core of addressing the issues that we have with substance abuse and addiction. It won't be... It won't be the complete answer, but it will be a great help if we do get something like that off of the ground. And to answer some of the needs that we've seen in that area, we've actually responded to some of the needs that were presented to us through the local criminal justice board. One of those needs was the need for a domestic violence program. So we started up a domestic violence intervention and prevention program, which we're offering to all of the, all of our referring sources, and we've had a pretty tremendous response. And there's a lot of need in that area that we're, that we're actually meeting through all three of the counties that we have. And actually, we've even seen some referrals from counties that are outside of ours that know that we're doing in-person programming for that now. We've also taken steps in that we've started up a co-parenting class to address the needs of folks who, you know, need to learn how to be co-parents a little bit better as they're sent to us from the courts. We've sent our staff off to be certified in that, and we're providing the best educational material we can to many families in the communities right now. We also work with a parenting program, and we have the parenting program going on, and that is going solid in two of the counties, actually three, because people are coming to both of the counties that are operating the classes from all three of the counties. So we're doing our best to meet that need. We do take an active role in the FRN, the local FRN, and we try to be involved with that as much as we can. So, one of the reasons I'm here today is to get your signature on the MOU for the Criminal Justice Board, not Criminal Justice Board, the Community Corrections Grant. So that just secures, you know, your written support, say that you're still in support of our program, which is part of the grant and has to be signed to go along with that. The other reason, I actually have two grants with me, and I'm a bit embarrassed to say that every single one of these little spots here that have signature blocks on them still have Commissioner Aglender as the signing official. So that is something I can address, and I can make sure that that's taken care of in there, and I'll get that, I'll get that done. But I can tell you what we're doing with the grants that we're hoping to get. We have the West Virginia Community Corrections Program Grant and also the West Virginia Reinvestment Initiative, the JRI Grant. With the JRI Grant, we are asking this year for $126,000 and some change so that we can actually add to our programming. One of the issues we're facing right now, is a good issue for us to have, is that we have an awful lot of referrals and we have an awful lot of folks that are in need. Currently, we have two case managers on our staff. We have several recovery coaches, two of them which are paid for out of a grant, the COSAP grant, and the rest of them are being paid for out of our general funding. We're looking for five staff from the JRI Grant, and what my plan is for that is to be able to hire part-time staff, because if the grant does not get renewed, I don't want to be in a spot where I have full-time folks that are depending on a full-time salary, they're depending on their health care that's coming out of that, and, you know, it just puts them in a bad position and puts us in a bad position with the county, even retirement issues with that. It does make it more cost-effective for us to be able to hire the part-time staff. We can manage the hours a little bit better, but we're at the point right now where in each of our offices, we need to start really considering expanding our hours of operation so that we can have classes that go into the evenings and the weekends. In our rural communities, there are a lot of folks that actually work in factories. A lot of these factories, they work on a point system, so it doesn't matter whether or not they're being court ordered to come to our program. Once they hit a certain number of points, if they have to come to our classes and we're only offering these classes during the daytime, they can lose their job. And one of the objectives of our program is to be able to keep people, you know, in their employment that they have, to keep them active in the community the best that they can be, and we don't want to be the cause of people not being able to keep their job because they have to come. And we do realize that there is an accountability that they have to take for their actions, but the things that we can take to mitigate that, we're trying to. So if we can get some folks hired so that we can actually have evenings, weekends, testing and classes, we'd like to be able to do that. Five of the staff, well, we're looking for five staff part-time, three of those staff members, to your point as well, are community engagement specialists. Like to be able to have some staff that are going to be able to go out into the community and find out how the community can better support what we're doing and how our program can better support the community. Those people will also be involved in the, in classes for facilitation, they'll be involved in testing and pretty much everything we do. But their focus is going to be engaging with the community to make sure that we're meeting the needs that the community has. And there'll be one for each of the counties that we have, because each of the counties have different needs. We'll also be looking for two recovery coaches to go along with that. That'll help out in, you know, all three of the counties, because we, it's difficult sometimes to find staff that we can, that we, that actually has experience in the field. We can get people trained, but the recovery coaching is paramount in the recovery process. We need folks who can sit one-on-one with the clients that we have and the participants and actually have some recovery coaching, where we can give them some supportive coaching to keep them on track and just let them know, hey, you know, we're not just a place that you come into to have to sit through classes, we actually care about your recovery, we care about what you're going to be able to contribute to the community, and we want to make that better. Right now, with the number of clients that we have, I'll give you just an example, out of Hampshire County, we're looking at an average of about 80 clients at any given time. We have two recovery coaches, which means if we're looking at face-to-face time with them, there's not a whole lot of time in the, in the week for them to be getting, you know, one-on-one counseling, coaching with them. That also works with our case management staff, when we're looking at that number, that many folks that we have coming in, and that's just Hampshire County, that's not Hampshire, Hardy, Pendleton. We have a large number of folks that are responding to our programming, and we don't want to have to institute, you know, any kind of level to say that we can't take anymore. We want to be able to help more and more of the community than we can. So as we, as we start looking into these grants, that's where that money is hopefully going to be going to be able to spend. We have not received the JRI Grant in the years that I've been here as a director. However, I keep asking, hopefully the state will comply. The Community Corrections Grant, which is the largest grant that we get, for years and years, has held steady at $190,000. This year, I'm asking for $305,000. That would, the addition would cover a full-time telehealth coordinator. Telehealth is a vital part of our programming, and it allows us to reach folks who couldn't otherwise make it into our offices for services throughout the week, because maybe they work in a different state for work. That's especially helpful in Pendleton County, where we have folks that are working in Virginia and crossing the line to come back. It's not always the easiest for them to make it to our programming. Again, accountability being what it is, they have to be accountable and they have to be able to make it to the programming, but if we can offer programming through the telehealth program, we want to be able to continue doing that. That program's useful in all three of the counties that we have. And it has been funded in the past through the SEEP Grant. We were the only recipients of the SEEP Grant this year for this current fiscal year, and it's highly likely that that grant will not be offered again next year. I think we got the last of the money that was allocated for that on the federal side. We want to be able to keep that program going, and I spoke with Community Corrections at, Division of Community Corrections in Charleston, and they indicated that this would be a good use for the Community Corrections Grant, to ask for a position that we can keep with that. We're also looking for a full-time recovery coach and case aide for Pendleton and also in Romney to take one of the positions we have and make it full-time for a facilitator and case aide that will help out with the burden of the case management and the classes that we have. It's tough when we're using part-time folks right now during the daytime for classes to be able to meet all of the class needs without going over the hours that would keep them in part-time status. So, the letter that I have written there for you, I'll just go ahead and read this aloud. "The South Branch Valley Day Report Center has been serving members of the communities of Hampshire County for years. During this time, the Hampshire County Commission has steadfastly provided financial report for the program. The amount of financial support is held steady at $17,666, which is the same amount promised by each of the three counties we serve, Hardy, Hampshire, and Pendleton. This year, we are requesting the amount to be increased to $20,000. We have steadily increased the services we provide to the community and now offer a variety of programs, which includes domestic violence intervention and prevention, parenting, co-parenting, criminal addictive thinking, relapse prevention, life skills, recovery coaching, telehealth services, which includes therapy, and more. Our caseloads have increased in each of our three counties, and we have the need to expand our hours and our staffing to accommodate the referrals. In addition to the requested increase in the county match, the DRC is requesting funding through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery phones, better known as ARP program, which has been available to all counties in the state of West Virginia. Understanding that funding, that that funding must be earmarked by the end of December 2024 and spent by the end of 2026, the DRC is requesting funding to offset the cost of operations staffing, which is outlined as an acceptable expense on page 15 of the final rule of the ARP program as behavioral health care such as mental health treatment, substance use treatment, and other behavioral health science. And further defined as prevention, outpatient treatment, inpatient treatment, crisis care diversion, outreach to individuals not yet engaged in treatment, harm reduction, and long-term recovery support, and the expansion of access to evidence-based services for opioid use disorder prevention, treatment, harm reduction, and recovery." That's our program, that's what we do. "The ARP program was designed and implemented to help Americans recover from the effects of the COVID pandemic. It is our position that the large number of referrals we are now receiving is due in large part to those members of the communities we serve that went untreated in their addiction or began their addiction without treatment options during the pandemic." Just to give you an example of what we're looking at right now, when I took over as a director for the DRC, Hampshire County, we were sitting somewhere around 11 clients, and that was right at the end of COVID. A lot of the classes that I was facilitating, even with drug court, we were doing them virtually. We couldn't have folks come in every single day. So there are a lot of folks that weren't actually being seen in court, DHR wasn't seeing as many folks, and we weren't getting referrals for folks that actually needed our treatment because the system was just bogged down with everything that was going on in COVID. We're seeing a direct result of a lot of those folks who began their addiction during that time, and we're doing our best to help them, and that funding is something that we could use. "Any financial support we can receive from this program will be used to offset the cost of programming, staffing, supplies, and testing, which will allow us to spend less money we bring in through our paid referrals, and allow us to build a sustainability fund, which will help us maintain the extra staff when ARP funds are depleted. We will additionally be requesting funding through the West Virginia First Foundation when those funds come available. And what we're looking to do is take that money that we can get, whatever money we can get from the ARP Fund and the West Virginia First Foundation, realizing that the ARP funding would have to be spent by the end of 2026. We want to be able to use that funding and then offset what we would be spending out of our own sustainability funds so that it's more of an investment. So instead of taking two years' worth of it, we're looking at four years that we can get out of that investment. The same thing with the West Virginia Foundation, First Foundation. My understanding is that that's going to be a seven-year fund. We'd like to be able to take funding from that when that becomes available through the region, and we'll look to do the same thing, offset our costs so that we can take that seven-year funding and turn it into potentially 14 years' worth of services that we can continue to provide for the other communities, and even longer, because as we add more clients and we have more coming in from the paid referral sources, our sustainability funds increase and we can actually continue the services on, hopefully, long after I'm done as a director and being able to help more and more of the community members that need us."
So. I'd like to start with the JRI Grant, the. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you would come forward, please, Mr. Williams.
I'm on the Oversight Board as you are, President Cannon. I'm not here to lobby for this program. What you decide as far as funding, that's your call. What I want you to know is, from an observer and a user of their services, what you're getting. In the last few years since Darren's come on, he and his folks have taken it from, you know, a place where it was a little dicey if it was going to survive, to a whole new level. When we ask him, I asked him, he said specifically about the domestic violence classes, which are difficult to acquire and become able to provide certified. We talked about it probably a year ago, and he immediately got on that project and is able to provide that, and now we have, how many people?
We have two counties, and right now we have classes in both of the counties. We're looking at probably 14 at the moment, and that's growing.
When we've asked for a service from DRC, Darren's just gone after it. We, right now, I think we're the only circuit that I know of that does supervised pre-conviction bond. We couldn't do it without DRC. They are active in the court hearings, Lacey Kimball's there almost every time we have court. We have court with, unfortunately, we have a lot of, still a lot of abuse and neglect cases. Darren Shop has taken over a lot of services for parents. I would say DRC's our primary provider now for our parent community and our court cases. So, DRC, whatever you decide to fund, all I can tell you is from my vantage point, their folks have been trustworthy, credible, hardworking, and very innovative to provide what we need. Never heard anybody complain about their services. Just their drug screening alone is a huge undertaking, and we just couldn't operate without it. And I say this even now, as you know, that the drug court went with pathways, so really, they don't have even the drug court as their clients now. But they picked up the slack tremendously, so.
We do actually still have some of the drug court clients in our parenting classes, because they overlap.
Yeah, they overlap.
Anyway, I just wanted to say from the court's vantage point, and I know Judge Carl would second this, and like I said, I went here for this, but I know what Darren's leadership has done. It's made life a lot easier for us, and I suspect you all have the numbers and the statistics on it. Without the DRC's help on the bond supervision, we have a lot more people in jail on a pre-trial, on a pre-conviction basis. So that alone is a huge value to us.
Thank you.
I just wanted to be able to say.
No, I agree, yeah, I mean, every service provided is, we had the metrics on it, you know, all of them are at least growing 100% under Darren, and some up into 8, 900 to 1,000%. And it goes to our conversation earlier, he's really, you know, seen the vision of all the players involved, including the commission, and our concerns about the family nucleus, as you can see, illustrated in his work towards domestic violence, and now our co-parenting service that encourages what you mentioned, Commissioner Hott, in repairing those family nucleuses for the betterment of the society all around. And I would definitely say we have probably the best criminal justice board we've ever had, Judge Williams. Steve Davis is on, we've even got Mary Long, Dr. Long, back on the board, and Jonathan Brill, Paige Mathias, Sherry Coleman, and all the commissioners from all the counties. And the sheriff, Sheriff Dawson, you know, everybody's on board. So I think it's a, it's a great thing, and, you know, want to be clear that we all collectively agree that this shouldn't be an outfit for repeat offenders over and over and over. It's people that deserve a second chance, that are nonviolent, that can be productive members of society, get them back into the workforce. So, at this time, I think we ought to organize and start from the top. The JRI Grant, thank you, Judge Williams, means that you don't have the correct wordage in there for the commission president, I still would entertain a motion to authorize the president to sign that grant, and then, once the corrections are made, that could happen. A motion, do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll move that we allow the president to sign the JRI Grant presented by Mr. Taylor today, when the signature spaces are corrected.
My motion and a second, all those in favor of approving the JRI Grant as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Moving on to the Community Corrections Grant, Mr. Taylor, what was our monetary figure there?
$305,808.
And no match from the commission for either one?
The match from the commission would be the $20,000.
Yes.
And what we have, that we have from the other three.
And then what we have, that we have from the other three counties who have indicated that they're willing to increase their match as well, and then anything above and beyond that, we actually meet through our funding, our general funds, to make that thirty percent match.
And I, and I will say that I mentioned that, while I asked the other commissions, you know, if we were going to be raising our increased amount to twenty thousand, if they would also oblige the request, and, and they did, and I do think that us being at the forefront of this, we do a lot of the bookwork, and as some know, but the public may need to know, that the South Branch Valley Day Report operates as the county commission. If, could you elaborate on that a little bit for the public?
Yeah, we are actually the Hampshire County Commission doing business as the South Branch Valley Day Report Center, and the county actually is who all of our paychecks go through. So this county commission and the county clerk's office takes care of all the payroll for us, which is, which is an undertaking. Right now, I believe we have eleven staff members, and we're looking to increase that this year. It will increase the burden for Hampshire County for, for the accounting on that side. The sheriff's office takes care of any of the incoming funds that we have, and is the fiscal officer for that. But the, the Hampshire County Commission shares the, the heaviest part of the burden for what we do.
And I want to thank Commissioner Hott for doing that. I, I know that it puts some strain on our.
You're the only one that's probably going to thank me for that.
Well, in my one opinion, you know, I think it gives us a more influential role, which allows our county better access to these services, and you'll see that correlated in the metrics, how, how much benefit our county gets from it compared to some of the other counties. And we've challenged them to kind of put their money, you know, bring their money to the table too, for lack of a better way of saying it, because we're also doing a lot of the bookwork, and the clerk's office takes a lot of extra stress that the other counties don't. But I do think it's worthwhile to our county, and, and you can see that in the, in the graduations. We normally have, you know, a lot more graduates than the other counties. We benefit by being, by spearheading this outfit. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the community corrections grant as presented by Mr. Taylor.
That's, that was for the twenty?
The three hundred and five thousand.
You're going to apply for the three?
Yes.
All right, I move we, we authorize Mr. Taylor to go ahead and apply for the, for the community corrections grant of three hundred and thirty-five?
Three hundred and five.
Three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and eight.
Do I hear a second on that?
I second that motion.
A motion and a second to approve the community corrections grant as presented, three hundred and five thousand. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Moving on to your budget request, as we know, it's a little, maybe a little soon, but we have, you have done this before, and we do this often, and it would be an increased amount of approximately twenty-four hundred dollars, correct?
That's correct.
From our previous match. And when was the last time we talked about raising that? Was it? I really don't know.
It hasn't been since I've been here, and as far back as I can look, in twenty sixteen.
Quite frankly, years ago, we started out, I think, at, it might have been thirteen, I think, when we first started, and then we, we eventually got up to seventeen. We've been at seventeen probably for, I don't know, five or six years. And, and I was the one that, that had, was always cautious about raising that because we were getting grants, and, and the lady, I forget, I even forget her name.
Director Oars.
Mr., Mrs. Oars.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, and, and since then, I mean, I, I'm not going to talk as much as these other guys, but there, since you have taken, taken this, this, this program over, I don't go around and give you a lot of accolades and so forth, but, but I do know that, that you've done a lot, you, you've really done a good job as far as I'm concerned. And, and I don't go out and, and, I'm not much of a suckup, you know, I'm either, I just, I just don't, but anyhow, there's, there's also with me, there's a matter of trust, if you trust a person. And I think here, since, since you've been there, as far as I'm concerned, you've, you've really went above and beyond, and when I see people doing that for the county, then I have a tendency to want to help more if I can. And so I, I want you to understand that, and with that, I'll, I'll move that we authorize the twenty thousand as requested.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the budget as presented by Mr. Taylor and the amount of twenty thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hopefully, we can keep it there for a little while.
And just a word on the community corrections grant, and I think what we've fallen victim, victim to sometimes with applying for these grants and getting the same amount of funding, which to me seems like it's not really consistent with a three-county program. I believe that what we've seen is that because it actually does list us here as the Hampshire County Commission on most of the documentation, I think that the other, when the grant reviewers look at it, they look at it as it's a Hampshire County Commission. So I've taken extra steps in both of these grants to, to just remind them throughout the grant, this is a three-county program, that we have, we have staffed offices in three counties. And when you're looking at the funding that they've given us continuously from about two thousand fifteen forward at a hundred and ninety thousand, that's not a lot to run three offices. It's, it's hardly anything. It's not enough really to cover the salaries we have if everybody was full-time in the office we have right here. So I'm really hoping that they're going to take that into consideration and then look at the numbers that we've been providing as far as the number of clients that we've been able to serve and what we've been able to do in the community. I'm hoping they will take that into consideration and increase that, that funding.
Lastly, you had the ARP funding that you mentioned. I will say we're certainly not at a, a point where we could really touch in depth on that. We, we've made several allocations, and we're currently in the process of seeing the projects we have through and then reevaluating in later weeks. So, you know, at a later date, we could, we could talk about that, and that's just my opinion. Do you gentlemen agree with that?
This is a funding request that I'm also making to the other, the other two counties involved in the program as well. So it's not just the burden of this county to come out, so I'm asking from each of the counties so we can support the offices that we have.
Main reason is we're very, very close to our maximum allocation, so we need to tabulate some projects that went under, some went over. We're, our grant writers putting a lot of time into organizing that so we can have a, a sum prepared before we talk further about that.
I can promise you that any funding that you actually could send us for this program will be spent by December of twenty twenty-six. You won't have a problem with seeing that money going to use for what it's supposed to be done.
If there's nothing further, Ms., Mr. Taylor, I appreciate you for coming in.
Just have the, the county MOU.
Okay. Now, I will mention, gentlemen, this isn't, this is something for me as a board member, correct?
No, this actually is a.
Okay.
Just the, the county's continued support for the program for the community corrections grant.
Is that the MOU?
Yes. Did you have those other documents?
All of them.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you have to sign that, he's got.
Okay, do you want to look at that?
It's the same one.
He's got Brian.
That's already got one of the other commission signatures on it.
Yeah, that's the only thing, he's got, yeah, Brian in there.
Gentlemen, I'll move that the, the commission, the full commission, approve the South Branch Valley Day Report Center MOU that they have with the Hampshire County Commission.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the MOU as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Moving on to the FFA proclamation, the, the school board canceled school for the day, so Mr. Lewis was to be home with his family, but let you, gentlemen, you want to take a look? Judge Williams, would you like to? One second, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lewis had requested information regarding streaming, so you probably have a countywide audience right there.
Good, good, very good.
Tell Mr. Lewis I said he should have been here.
He brought us a flag. Did you, gentlemen, you requested we fly a flag? Did you hear about that, Commissioner?
Not, not that part, no, sir. I have not heard that yet.
Next week's National FFA Week, yes.
Sure. Okay, I'm just going to go and sign it while we're here. We have my national. I move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second that the county commission adopt the proclamation recognizing Hampshire County FFA Day and authorize the president to adopt and read the proclamation for the county. Whereas in nineteen seventeen, the U.S. Congress passed the Smith-Hughes Act, providing funding for the teaching of vocational agriculture in high school. In nineteen twenty-five, at Virginia Tech University, the educational leaders organized the Future Farmers of Virginia for Boys in Agriculture classes, soon after other states adopted this model and program. And whereas, the Future Farmers of America was established in nineteen twenty-eight in Kansas City, Missouri, during the first National FFA convention assembling thirty-three delegates from eighteen states. The FFA was then chartered in the state of West Virginia in nineteen twenty-eight, and the West Virginia FFA Association was formed. In nineteen thirty-two, the Romney FFA chapter was chartered by West Virginia FFA, and the Cape and Bridge FFA chapter was later chartered in nineteen forty-nine. Upon the consolidation of these schools, the Hampshire County FFA was chartered in nineteen sixty-four and was, and continued to provide premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agriculture education for sixty years. Whereas the FFA provides a platform for students to compete and showcase skills gained from the classroom and hands-on learning, students also acquire leadership skills through the organization. In nineteen sixty-five, the FFA merged with the New Farmers of America, which was agricultural organization for African-American male students, female membership, and the FFA was later allowed in nineteen sixty-five. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, the Future Farmers of America officially changed its name to the National FFA Organization to reflect the growing diversity of agriculture. Currently, there are approximately nine hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight members nationwide. In West Virginia, Hampshire County is one of eighty-six members, making it one of the largest FFA chapters in West Virginia. And whereas the Hampshire County FFA has provided an educational resource, resource to Hampshire County, covering an abundant level of agricultural leadership, scholarship, and citizenship for now over ninety-two years through four generations of members. Therefore, in recognition of the exemptional leadership skills and academic abilities of the student members of Hampshire County FFA, be it proclaimed by the judges of the Twenty-second Judicial Circuit, National FFA Week is held February seventeenth, seventeen through the twenty-fourth in the year twenty twenty-four. And the Senate of the state of West Virginia certified through Resolution fourteen that Monday, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four was officially observed as West Virginia FFA Day. And further recognition of the aforementioned and exceptional benefits of FFA provides the students and citizens of Hampshire County, be it further proclaimed by the County Commission of Hampshire County, West Virginia, the thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-four shall officially be observed and recognized as Hampshire County FFA Day. Do you want to date this, sir? They also requested if Judge Williams would represent the Judicial Circuit and take a photo with the commissioners, please.
Where would you like to go, sir? Front of the flags here?
Get you all in front of the flags would be great.
Okay. Here, Bob, you're the oldest farmer here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming in.
And you know what I'd like to say about FFA? You know, my mom was a four-H leader, and me and my brother were farm kids, like you, I'm sure, and Commissioner Hott. Were you a farm kid?
Well, I didn't do FFA, no, but I, I did grow.
So we naturally gravitated FFA, and my brother's actually an American farmer, which there aren't that many. I only got to state farmer level. I was a chapter president one year, and I'll just have to say, those were some of the fondest memories of my life, times of my life, all the judging teams, we got to go all over, not, not just the state, all over. National convention back then was in Kansas City. That was fun. And, and just the skills and the values that you learn from FFA, I hope I'm still using them because it's, as far as an organization for young people, four-H and FFA, I, I think they're at the top.
You know, Judge, I've always said that, well, haven't always said it, but for the last few years, being involved with four-H and being on the board there, that four-H and FFA programs are probably the most important programs we have in the county. Even, and I know that people don't like this, but I think sometimes they're more important sometimes in our educational system because they, they, they really learn, and the majority of them kids you don't see on a jail, on a jail.
No.
You might have one once in a while, but you don't, and, and it's, and therefore it's, it's money well spent. You know, it is, so, yeah, I've always, I've always helped the four-H and FFA, they're very important.
Any organization that values hard work, I'm a hundred percent behind, so, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis and the FFA for the proclamation and the, he did also mention the request to fly a flag at the courthouse, gentlemen. And if, need a motion for that, Commissioner?
No, I just want to.
I think that, that would pair well with the proclamation. Moving on to the, our ten-twenty agenda item, HCESA budget, Mr. Malcolm, Mr. Welkoms.
Ms. Turner here today.
Okay.
Jeff is actually driving me around.
Okay.
Legally allowed driving, but good morning, commissioners.
Morning. Morning.
I'm not sure exactly where you want to start, but I can offer up a little bit. I know there's been, every year this time of year, we have budget, budgetary constraints because between October, November, and December, income cuts down, people paying their fees, and it has this year, did the last two years. Where we're at, we are still within our guidelines on our employee pay rates, which you all have had this from earlier in the year when we did it. What I'm projecting, there's enough, we've got enough to pay for now, and we have a, enough in the non-fee accountability account to pay for a couple. And we have a, enough in the non-fee account, the billing account, to pay for a couple more months, no problem. But I will provide you with a copy of this. That is what's projected based on last year's balance sheets that comes in. As you can see, generally, we get the, February's a good income month because people are coming in, paying their taxes and everything. So, I would like to present something at the next commission meeting, if possible, requesting a budget allowance, possibly from wherever, to help us meet the corners ends until we get there. We are seeing this year, and the only thing that comes out of the fee account is payroll, one hundred percent of our payroll. We averaged a hundred and, a hundred and forty-four thousand, ninety-six dollars and seventy-eight cents a month for October, November, and December payroll. That's with the addition of new truck, that's with the extra pay at night shift, and the, I want to say the extra truck, the Springfield truck. And there's no money that comes in in October, November, and December, everybody's saving up for Christmas. We have dropped down to fifty thousand a payroll now, so I expect it to be about a hundred thousand to a hundred and ten thousand per month.
Ball CEDs? Yes.
So, based on those numbers there with what we have, and if we can get a little bit of your, to help cover our pay raise and our shift differential, I think we should possibly be sufficient. But I won't guarantee it. Because every year, we're working with a budget that was based seven or eight years ago, and we've absorbed quite a bit. And we started with employees that paid ten dollars, twelve dollars, and eighteen dollars. And we're five dollars plus on that now. And we absorbed a good bit more, so. I didn't know where you all wanted to go with that, so that's why I just got requested to come for a budget.
I think, I think, Commissioner Higginson is the one that requested.
Correct, correct, and I was going to speak up. And I had requested that we put budget on, for HCSA on the agenda, Mr. Malcolm, because what I would like to see is a, is that account nine ninety-four, now that we've have a few years on the books, is for that to be just like every other entity where the, where we fill it out across the board, so that the commission
Sure.
can look at what you're asking for.
Last year was our first year, if you recall, and we put an estimate because we had to retrieve numbers. This year, we have a much stronger base of numbers. I can tell you right now, in the past six months, Mr. Wilkins has been beneficial. We've spent forty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents in vehicle maintenance and repairs. If you look at our budget on nine ninety-four, we only budgeted forty thousand dollars. So, but a lot of that is the price of parts and labor everywhere has just almost doubled. And that has eaten us up, but that's coming out of our no-fee account. The only thing that comes out of the fee account is the salaries.
Payroll, yeah.
So, again, I just, what I'm trying to do here is, and I, and I realize we've, every year, we've gotten a budget from you guys. But it's, as the HCSA has had to grow, and we've grown past where we were designed, and being one of the Commissioners on the board early on, you know, I know we are far past where, where we designed to be. So, I'd just like to see that, that spreadsheet.
You will have a much more accurate budget detail this, I guess, when we do it next month. I think you just sent it out, so.
And I, and I also wanted to give you a warning to gather those numbers because I know Clerk asked for those numbers in mid-March or early March, so.
They're already in the hands of the Department heads.
Yeah, we do monitor it pretty closely nowadays. I mean, it's much better than what it was, I'll be honest.
But that's, that's why I put it on the agenda, is, is I wanted to, because as we grow, I know we're going to have to make decisions, and it makes it easier for all three of us if we see that in the same format as we see for example, Sheriff.
I like it in black and white, myself, sir. I like it in black and white, that way I can refer back to it, and there's no questions. Well, Commissioners, last March, we discussed this, and, but we do. We run into the same problem every year at this time of year. This year, it's about a month older than it was last year, and the year before. And I've yet to have been able to, or have to come and ask for anything. But I do intend to ask for some money to help with salary enhancement, which was the two dollars an hour and the dollar an hour.
And I, and I'll just further clarify for the public that the, the reason the HCSA is, is a different, when it comes to the budget items, is because they have their own revenue source with the ordinance, and they create their own revenue, which is, we have other, we have other entities that create some of their own revenue, but theirs is substantial compared to the others. So, you know, they're creating their own revenue on top of the ordinance, which is separate. So, it's not exactly the same budget that we, that everybody's familiar with the budget, so. Just making that clear. That's why you all were separate.
Yes, sir. We're similar to nine-one-one, I believe.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yes, I forgot about that. That's a good, good point there.
Would you say that, I'm sorry?
We're similar to nine-one-one.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for coming in. I appreciate it, Commissioner Higginson.
We have grant requests too, that we, Ms. Turner has one that she's been working with, I believe Darren and Rolf have.
My grant for you is just a very brief synopsis of a very lengthy document for the grant that I would like your permission to consume. This is a SAMSA grant, twelve-three-seventy-two, with the assistance of the county grant writer. It's a Rural Emergency Services Grant, and if approved, it's for up to two hundred thousand dollars per year over a two-year span. These funds are specifically stated for EMS training related to mental health and substance abuse, and assisting them in seeking recovery through things like Day Report Center, as well as recruiting initial and required ongoing training for EMS recertifications, purchasing of naloxone, which would be used in opiate overdose reversals for our providers, as well as certain approved PPE and equipment for EMS personnel. I have already spoken with Darren for the Day Report Center, and he is on board with collaboration for this project since it meshes very well with his initiatives. I've also spoken with several educational and local educational institutions that are willing to partner with us on this, as well as the Boulder Crest Foundation, which is specifically a mental health nonprofit foundation for veterans and first responders of all disciplines. And they not only are, since this is maybe not something you would be familiar with, they're not only for helping our own veterans, the first responders with their mental health, but will better prepare them to interact and assist those, those patients that are seeking treatment for that as well. Money is approved for equipment, like I said before. And it just, in general, bring more opportunities for trainings that would not normally be physically possible because of the cost of them. One thing I did forget to add into the papers that I gave you is there is a ten percent match for the grant, but it can be an in-kind match for that.
In-kind would be, Mrs. Turner is a full-time trainer and paramedic with us, so we're already absorbing that.
So, the ten percent match for this, if you get to two hundred, it'd be twenty, correct? If you get to two hundred thousand, if you get the whole thing?
Yes.
Yes, and it would be, if it's for both years that were approved, it would be for a total of the four hundred, yeah.
The, the match would be provided, when we have to get the match, I mean.
The in-kind would be?
Basically, part of, from what I'm understanding from the county grant writer is that basically, for that time being, we could utilize the funds using for my salary, since I would be the project manager, and use those as in-kind match, as something that we're already paying.
As far as I'm concerned, this, this, we should at least go ahead and buy.
Yeah, I would agree, you know, it's training to rural areas, which is, everybody knows is obviously a need. So, if we can facilitate that through HCSA, that's wonderful. So, I would make a motion that we allow Ms. Turner and Mr. Malcolm to pursue the grant.
I'm a motion and a second to approve the SAMSA grant application as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Commissioner, I have another grant request to pursue, and that would be for HCSA to put power load cot and larger, they're not bariatric stretchers, but they're a larger capacity stretcher load limit of seven hundred pounds, where currently ours have five or five-fifty right now, in three of the ambulances that we do not have. And it's an AFG Assistance Firefighter Grant Program, and it does have a ten percent match that we would have to pay upfront if we, if awarded the grant, or with that. So, that's something that, but the grant request I'm asking for, for the load systems in three of our units, is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five. For the cots alone, Power Pro Two is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, so a total of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. This would be a late fall, usually they don't hand out the grants until fall. So, right now, what I'm asking for, grant period's open, is to continue to work with Mr. Ronkin, and I've been obtaining a good bit of information, but I just want permission to go ahead and pursue this. And what I will do is, for the power lift system, I understand, I'm assuming everyone knows, but just for the general public, we had three injuries last year with people helping load patients into the ambulance. Because you, two people go out on a crew, you roll the stretcher out to the ambulance, you raise it up, we have power lift system. It sets it down, and then two guys or two women, whichever it is, pay, employees have to get a hold of the back of the cot, pick the cot up and raise the wheels, and then slide it in. This avoids that. This, you roll the cot up there, it loads onto a arm that sticks out of the back of the ambulance, and then moves up in the ambulance, and takes the back screen.
And speeds the process up, expedites the patient faster.
It's a lot safer for the patient, too.
Would you mention that sum, or that figure, rather, the, how much are the power cots, too?
The power cots alone are a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-five cents.
And it's a ten thousand dollar match?
Ten percent.
Ten percent?
Ten percent.
Okay.
And then the load system that goes in the back of the ambulance and mounts to the floor is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven oh five, thirty-four, for a total of two fifty-eight, oh thirty-seven, twenty-nine, if my math was correct. We would have to come up with approximately twenty-six thousand dollars this fall.
Personally, in my one opinion, I mean, that, that's a significant amount of money gained for a ten percent match. I think we'd be remiss to not consider it, gentlemen.
Our two newest units, we have power load systems in at our expense, we paid for them.
And when would you need the funds for the power cots?
Only if awarded, and that would be late fall. Yeah, it's not, it's late fall, and I think we would have the money available in HCSA.
That makes it a lot more adjustable.
I'll move if we go ahead and authorize, if we go ahead and apply for the two grants.
Second?
I have a motion and a second that we authorize Mr. Malcolm and HCSA to apply for the grants as presented the, what do we call on this grant, Mr. Malcolm?
It's the power load system, AFG.
AFG grant.
AFG grant request.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for working on that.
Mr. President, I had one question concerning the enhanced salary funds that we received. Do we, we need any action on that, Clerk, at this time?
Not today, don't we got to make act, we have to do action someday.
Does it have its own account, Mr. Clerk?
It, it has been deposited in its own account, but I just wanted to clarify, do we need any action today for those monies? I know eventually we will, okay?
Probably another meeting, but.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on here to clarify ARP administration duties. Who do we have for that, sir?
Again, gentlemen, that was just a quick agenda item that I wanted to formally respond to. And a couple weeks ago, we had, Ms. Timbrook came in and updated us on our ARP status. She has, as most know, taken another job, and, and no longer works full-time for the county. We had agreed to keep her on just per diem basis, I guess, to, to help with that. And she had, she has done a wonderful job for the, for the county over the years. However, at the last meet, at the last time we met concerning that, she had turned those papers over to our new grant writer, Mr. Ronkin. And I, I believe a lot of this has cleared itself up, but I wanted it formally addressed as to whether we were going to continue to pay Ms. Timbrook, or whether we were going to just shift that responsibility over to Mr. Ronkin. And that, that's why I put it on the agenda, gentlemen.
Did she resign?
No, she resigned, but I didn't think she was, I didn't think we was paying her anymore, but that's, that's just my thought, I don't have any more.
I, I know it's, back in the minutes, we'd have to look at it exactly, but we had asked her to stay on for the ARP. It was my understanding, and I, I just, you know, I think that's very important that we keep track of, of the timing on that, and I want to spend every single dollar that we were allotted and not send any back to the federal government because they're surely not going to give it back to the citizens, so I'd like to spend it in Hampshire County. So, I, I just wanted to be very on top of that and be sure that monies that don't get spent either go to another project, or, you know, we, we find a place for a new project. And again, like I said, I, Ms. Timbrook has done a great job for us for the past, ever since I've been here, but she has taken another job, and I just wanted, I just wanted clarification there, gentlemen, on do we want to turn that completely over to Mr. Ronkin, perhaps with a day or two of training for Ms. Timbrook, or do we want to keep her in charge of that? That was my...
Mr. Ronkin, would you come forward, please? Do you have any information?
Yes, I do.
Regarding that?
Yeah, I do.
And I, I think that's a great point, Commissioner Higginson. I'm glad that you mentioned that. I mean, if, if our federal government spent money in ways that we thought was conducive to a better American society, maybe it wouldn't be such a bad thing if they conservatively rescinded some of the over expenditures.
Yeah, and, and, not to interrupt, Commissioner, but at this point, we have it in our hands, so I want to make sure our Hampshire County citizens get it off.
Gentlemen, good morning. To clarify a couple things, first of all, I had a very good meeting with Ms. Timbrook yesterday morning. I spent approximately an hour and a half with her. I had approximately two pages of questions for her, which she went through and answered all of them. So, I'm at the point where I either need to completely take over this or the commission has to go back and ask her to, to start again. The good news is that we've done a lot of work in the last two weeks since the last commission meeting. Those numbers are as accurate as, as of today. We have developed a database that breaks them down by each, each project. There's thirty projects. I have nineteen that I've put in the completed column. One is a question mark because it's broadband one, I call it, and broadband one, they have not invoiced for the last seven months, but they have the largest amount of underage. So, my expectation is, is that they would like to spend that. But I don't have an answer for that, but it is... they would like to spend that, but I don't have an answer for that, but it is under the completed projects there. The 11 projects that are ongoing, most of them, as you can see, some of them have spent either no money, no funds, or they're at the beginning of the project, for example, the EMS building where we have $300,000 budgeted. My time with Ms. Timbrook yesterday was very valuable because we walked through the U.S. Treasury website, and we walked through the reporting requirements and all that. For your information, I am now the only administrator, or minister, administrator for ARP funds for this county as of yesterday morning. The U.S. Treasury gave me sole administrator rights. We have some work to do still, we are working through the files for missing checks, checks that have been written, but we just don't have them in the files. We also are going through our invoices and getting all of the invoices. We have made significant progress, we have a current list of the shortages that we're looking for, i.e. for checks and for invoices, and I really expect to have that up to date in the next week to two weeks. So, what I'm hoping to give you at the next meeting is an electronic copy that you, gentlemen, I'm going to make it read-only, because there are a lot of formulas in there, and if you start messing with numbers, it, it doesn't then compute, but what I'm hoping for is to give you a read-only document that you can look at every, every single project, all 30 of them, and see exactly where we're at by invoice, by check number, you can, you can do anything and everything with that, query it for any questions you might have.
So you feel, you feel that you can, that you, you've got this under control now?
I have it under control.
It sounds to me, gentlemen, that the, the problem that I had has worked itself out, I, I just wanted to know who my go-to person was formally, so that I could check on this.
And gentlemen.
And it sounds like Mrs. Timbrook and Mr. Ronkin have got it worked out, so we may not need a motion, but I, I was just concerned that I needed to know the person that I was going to for information.
And Commissioner Angler, that's really important, because as important it is for you, it's even more important for all of those projects to know the point of contact. We can't have an invoice going, and Erin made a really good point, her email's been hacked for a considerable amount of time, so someone sending her an invoice right now goes in this big black hole, anyway. So, I, I would really appreciate the support of the commission, just let me handle it, because I'm there already.
Do we need a motion, gentlemen, to that effect?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can move to that, yes.
I have a motion to authorize Mr. Ronkin to be chief administrator on the ARP projects going forward. I hear second.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And she's agreed to, if you need any, anything that you can call and.
I learned long ago, Commissioner, not to burn bridges, so I, I'm actually told her that I would like to give her what I have, just so she's aware of, of it, because if there are questions, I need to, I need to reach out to her, and she didn't have any problem with that. So we're, we're, we're there.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Moving along, we're running a little bit behind here, we have Mr. Mans with the ARP funding request for the town of Cape and Bridge. Running a little behind.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Appreciate the time, your timing actually worked out well, because you guys are already on topic and have, I think, some handy documents in front of you. Want to be brief this morning, give you guys an update on the school street project, it probably is marked as completed there on your list, if I were a betting man. Mr. Ronkin's walking out, if it's not, then it's one that's got all of the work done on it so far.
Mr. Ronkin, would you stay present for this, please?
Actually, yes. Thank you.
Sorry, may I, you want to just come up?
The school street project.
Let's see, just not interrupting Mr. Mans, but it's on the second page, gentlemen, first one, ARP number 13.
So, the scope of that project was originally to do all of those things underground that we needed to do to lay the groundwork so that we could eventually get that project paved. We've been in that realm now, since we completed the last phase earlier in '23, there's no more work that's going to be done under that current scope of work on the school street. But that is not to say at all that there is no more work to be done. We've talked to West Virginia DOH, we've had their engineers confirm, our Thrasher engineers confirm, everybody came up with the same number, there's about $500,000 worth of work to do on that street. The reason why that number is so high is that the street was never designed to be a through-traffic street the way that it is, and it just hasn't had a maintenance budget to take care of it for years and years. It's left up to the town, which the town's got an annual $25,000 a year road budget, and that street, because of the schools, just sees a tremendous amount of traffic. Long story short, we really want to get that fixed, we're still working, we've got letters out to DOH, I actually met with DOH contacts recently and got some more cool information, but nothing jumps out as it's, though it's going to happen fast. So, the request is, it's a bifurcated request to you, gentlemen, I would request first that you would consider allowing the unused funds from the allotted amount on the school street project, so we try to be careful with taxpayer dollars, I think we ended up saving, it looks like around $32,000 in those projects. We try to bid competitively, and we try to use local where we can to keep costs knocked down, and we were able to save some money. There's no more money that's going to be spent on that project in the current scope of work. The first request would be that you, gentlemen, would consider allowing reuse of those funds, you could call it the same project if you want, but I wasn't going to try to pull one in and get work done outside of the scope of work on that street. You, gentlemen, approve the particular scope of work, you could modify, you know, that, that scope, you could authorize modification of that scope to include patching on the street, and I can tell you that we can get a lot of, a lot of patching done for the amount of money that we already saved on that project. It's not going to be a permanent thing, but what it do, it will most likely let us get that bridge where we end up having a good conversation with the DOH to get the road turned over, and even while that's happening, we're planning on working with the DOH to pull down big dollars to get the whole project done. But this could get us from now to the end state where we have a nice, updated street.
I think that the big issue back when these funds were allocated was, they were, in the beginning, very strict on water, sewer, broadband, and then they loosened the reins on that, but at the time, we had Mrs. Timbrook look into that, and she didn't think that it was a kosher allocation to put that, because we wanted to do the road.
That, so that, that was prior to the final rule that was advanced. The final rule actually allowed for all things that are appropriate by the performance of local government unless they're otherwise exempted or listed otherwise. I've had to deal with this with other governmental clients, so I'm pretty familiar with the rule.
Okay.
When they modified that rule, and understandably, they didn't want to do all the audits, because they knew they were going to audit, you know, all of the monies that went out, they essentially really broadened up the use, and paving is actually appropriate now. But when we first came to you, you're completely correct, Commissioner, it was not, it was not acceptable back then, and that's why, actually, the request was never made to even consider that.
Okay.
I, you know, I understand what he's saying, however, I feel that since we made the transition here to, to Mr. Ronkin, I would feel a lot better waiting to see exactly what we have and what we don't, what's been allocated, and what the funds that have been allocated, or the people that have, have these funds allocated to them, are they, are they going to do the project?
Yeah.
Because I do know we can't wait until, I mean, they have until 2026 to complete the project, but that going, we can't wait clear down to the end of December, and they got a project that might take three years, you know, so there, we, we just wasted that money.
Yeah.
So I think, I would like to wait until, till Mr. Ronkin gets, gets, gets a hold on this stuff and make sure we know exactly where we're at before we allocate any more money to anybody, regardless of, of the projects, because as Commissioner Angler said, we, we don't want to lose this, and I want to make sure that we've done everything, and that we have all of our i's and t's crossed and our i's dotted.
It's something as we move forward, and, and, Mr. Mans, this is why lately I've been visiting Mr. Ronkin's office frequently, is because, you know, there would be such a thing as pooling different monies, like your money from the project that you helped with there in Cape and Bridge that's left over, we could pool those monies and have a larger sum to make a bigger difference somewhere. You know, I, I don't want to make any promises to a specific project, but again, we have started the ball rolling on, you know, who's going to get done, who's serious about doing their projects, who's not, and as that money starts to pool up, I think we could better make decisions. Would you agree, gentlemen?
Absolutely, yeah. You said you reached out to the DOT, are, are they interested in helping in any way?
It's, it's not as though there's no interest, it's that the process is pretty complex, and it goes up, I've talked to as many local contacts as we can.
And, and, not to, well, I may have interrupted, but it's, DOH is, it's, it's a process to get anything done. I mean, you, you can't get, you, you have, they have to come out and get a permit, and to just put some rocks along the road, I mean, it's a, it's a process, and it takes forever, and, and I know what he's talking about, he does, it's just.
I will say it's a need down there, I, I frequent that area often with my children, they, they practice volleyball down there, they participate in Embity Buddy, you know, it's a, we have a nice school up there on the hill, a middle school and an elementary school, but to get to it, you kind of, kind of cross the river to get to it, that's a little bit of a stretch, but, you know, it's, it's a bumpy ride to get there, and, and the bus is on it every day, it's not helping it, but I have, I have, you know, mentioned it to our, our local representatives, that, that there's certainly a need there, and I think it's something we all need to keep pressuring, because it's, you know, there again, we got these nice schools up there, but you kind of got to go through the, the rough to get to it, I, I don't know how else to explain it.
Is the Cape, is Cape and Bridge town, do they have any latitude in their budget to give anything towards the project?
I mean, they're, they're still doing some things, but their $25,000 a year budget does all the streets for the entire town, and it, their entire budget wouldn't touch what needs to happen on this project. So, I mean, they're, they are still doing the worst things that they can, or addressing the worst things that they can, but we're, we're just trying to figure out, okay, a realistic expectation is that the conversations eventually go well with DOH, and then the road gets brought into the state system, but even then, we're still going to have local partners that need to figure out the funding, it's most likely going to be a congressional earmark to do the largest portion of work, because even if the state brings it in, it doesn't mean that it's automatically paid for. So we've, we've got a trajectory, but it's just, it's, it's a hard tell, it's hard telling our citizens, like, hey, you know, don't worry, just wait another three years.
Well, the thing is, Mr. Logan, it's, regardless of what we do, it's, it's going to take a lot of time.
It do.
And if, for me, I would like for, for you guys maybe to, to maybe work with Mr. Ronkin and see whatever, anything you can pick up out there to, to help with this, and I know that's going to take time, but any project we do, for the Fergus still project, you know, they, they wanted water two years ago, or three years ago, and they're, they still don't have water, but they're, it's, it's just, it's just an earned process, and you got to sit and wait and, and do paperwork, and you have somebody in Charleston or somewhere else that, that, that don't even, don't come into the office, it's a mess. I'm serious, guys, if you think we got a mess, they've got a mess.
Have they had any cost estimates? Because what also, what I'm scared of, I see all the time contractors and engineers take advantage of, we sit up here in a public meeting, we develop a pool of money, and then that's now public information, and all those bids become inflated.
Yep.
As soon as they hear taxpayer money, these costs of these projects go up.
We've developed a good system for that, actually, so that was the second part of the request for you, gentlemen, so if you didn't say, hey, go ahead with the 32, what I just wanted to get this in front of you is, anything that you can do, we can use, and we can put to the highest and best use. So the way that they would do it, is, the way that we would do it, if you all said, hey, we found 45 grand left over in the budget, you all can have this to do your temporary patches, what we do is we do two rounds of bidding, I'd do a value bid, so I'd contact contractors locally that can do this kind of work and say, give me the scope of work that you can get done for $45,000, and then that will end up with a winning scope of work, right? So we'll have, hey, we know we can at least get this much work done for this amount of money. Then you take that scope of work and put it back out as an actual bid, and we've met all of our statutory requirements for putting the job out, but it allows us to be flexible to where if you guys say, hey, we only found $52,000, I can get you $52,000 worth of work at a competitive rate, so that's always available to you.
The other thing we got to remember, guys, if, if we do find anything left over that can be allocated, there's, there's also, the county, even, even we have some things that we might want to do, so we, we can't go out and, and commit to, to any one person for any kind of an allocation as far as I'm concerned.
The roof down there on that building we took over, there's, there's a lot of.
Major concerns.
You mean the Cape and Bridge?
Yeah.
And we've got, I mean, we've got some stuff that we got to look at, and, and we have to take care of the, of the people's houses, too, so, and we have, any time since I've been on this commission, that we could help the town of Romney or the town of Cape and Bridge, we've always done it, we, matter of fact, Cape and Bridge has to give us back funds, I mean, that, that they didn't utilize, so they're very responsible about how they spend their money, but I think we have to be responsible to is how we, before we start just making a commitment and saying we're going to do this or do that.
And one important thing, gentlemen, we've all left out here today, is I wouldn't mind seeing the school step up and try to make some waves as well to, to do the project.
Yeah, I think it could be a collaborative effort, and.
You can forget that.
You know, a hand, a hand up, not a hand down.
Well, we said that here today, so I was going to bet.
You know, if, even if Cape and Bridge could give $500, to me, that, that speaks volumes, that, that they're, they got some skin in the game, and, and, you know, we use the road a lot for that building, but you know what I mean, it's just like my point with the Parks and Rec, even if, you know, they raised a thousand bucks for that roof, it makes me feel a lot better.
And I, and, and the project he's talking about, I'd like to see the darn thing completed, but it's, we have to be careful as to how we, how we go about it.
You get the cart before the horse a little bit, but yeah, I think we're all in agreement.
Gentlemen, the remaining funds from the original project are back at your discretion, so they can go back in the pot, and then we're ready to work with you in any capacity. We're still working on our end, and we're, we're clutching at straws to try and figure out how to get the project done, but know that we are working on it, so, thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we have several things. We have official budget revision, number four, to the general fund, and it's just allocating some funds into the right accounts that have come in as revenue. Also, Mr. Taylor has his documents ready.
Revenues? It's pretty good. Exhonations.
Mr. President, I move we approve revision number four, as requested by the county clerk.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the budget items as presented by the clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. The only, the only three they're asking for approval are, there were office errors. Okay. The rest of them were not timely filed.
You seen this?
So next year they would get, being that it's uninhabitable, next year they would get approval? Will that, they have to reapply for an uninhabitable? Well, we're denying that one anyway. Because it's too late? Yeah. Okay.
So you seen this?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. President, I move we approve the exonerations as presented by the assessor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the exonerations as presented by the tax assessor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. He was saying the two here were, these were filed late, although uninhabitable, it wasn't filed in a timely manner.
We have to pass the salary increases for my staff. It's already my budget.
It's done. Did Jeff bring you down?
Yes.
Where's that at?
Well, there's, there's two stacks.
Oh, okay.
I think this is the one Jeff brought, and this is the one that I brought back.
There it is, I see it.
Yeah, from this one, that's okay.
Does he have a chief deputy? There is for the tax deputies.
I think it's not formally. She's got seniority.
Okay. Do you signify a chief deputy? You don't?
No, they all have pretty much the same authority.
Okay.
As, as deputy clerks, they can sign my, or use a stamp for my name and have my delegated authority. I'll be hiring a, a new person to fill the staff out. That's the vacant position that's listed there. She'll be coming to me just soon. She'll be starting on Thursday.
Okay, Mr. President, on the, the ambulance exemptions and applications, I move we approve the, the Goddard, Miller, and Hot applications and deny the Hines and, no, I was wrong about that. The Goddard, the Miller, and the Barnett and deny Hines, Hot, Compton, and Lewis.
Who is Lewis?
Lewis.
James and Susan Lewis.
K O N K A.
I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations as presented on behalf of the ambulance fee exemption request, or, excuse me, the, yes, exemption. I wanted to say exoneration, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
We're working with five people, since the best we had six, that's why we had some money to work around. So I'll get the next staff at this point, I want to keep.
This is already in his budget?
Okay, okay. I move we authorize the clerk's request for salary adjustments.
I'll second that motion, and I'll note that he's already showed us that's in his budget.
I have a motion and a second to approve the county clerk's presentation for pay raises to his deputies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen. And the only other thing we have is invoices.
Saying something about these, he pointed out. Guess amounts, he didn't necessarily understand, or I'm not sure what he, did he say something to you about it?
Ooh.
Did you look into these, or you just noticed them today?
I was listening to them, I'm there. Have you seen them? Jesus Christ.
Is this CJ?
Yeah, I think it is. But it's a kid, we don't know. I mean, you damn good. It's just-
Yeah, I think he made a good point about his idea. Well, that's right. Did he call you, did Nathan call you at all about this?
Well, I've talked to him over the last few months about it. The reason I talked to him about it is because of Augusta out there. They had some bills in there that I thought was ridiculous. So I talked to Bunkin about it too.
You talked to him?
No, because I'm gonna put, I'm gonna do it. He's gonna send you a letter for this. I think I'll write it on there when he sends it to me.
Okay.
Then I'll get it to you.
I'll just hold.
Okay.
Break, can you hold it?
Yeah.
Are these the only ones for those, for Augusta?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't mind that. He was charged fifty bucks.
Put there.
The same thing you, you do if you inspect a car. And we said, here, you're gonna get fourteen bucks for inspecting what the hell you want. So, anyway.
Man, yeah.
This thing, it's, it's like, it's basically like you said, when they know it's a government entity.
Do we get itemized bill for those? Commissioner Hart, do you know if we got an itemized bill for the, I guess, invoice number-
I haven't seen it, but I know we do.
One oh oh seven, one oh twenty-eight, and five oh seven nine eight three.
Well, I'm sure we do have them, but I haven't seen them, but no. I just, we, we can do the, I mean, they'll have the itemized. That's just, I just-
You wanna hold off on those? Commissioner?
I think we're gonna have to, quite frankly, I think we're gonna have to talk to our elected officials that have vehicles and, and see if we can come to some kind of a resolution to some of this darn stuff.
Okay.
I think we're gonna have to pay the bill. I do think that. But, and there, matter of fact, I think Norma, Norma was, was having some problems with some of her, you know, as to the price on stuff. But I think if we, we sit down and talk, and some of, some of them have talked about having their own maintenance. And, you know, that, that sounds good, but then again, sometimes I, I think we'd be in a mess if we done that. You know, we gotta hire some, we gotta hire somebody, or do, and I think, I don't know. I know, I know parts of one of, I do know that. Dang.
Yeah.
I, I just wondered, gentlemen, if those three included a, they, they say maintenance, but I, I just wondered whether the, you know, a hub was replaced, or rotors, or-
We can look at those.
Or what?
You don't wanna-
Because there's a big difference between that and, and regular oil change. I definitely wanna make sure we're-
Yeah, and, and we, in my one opinion, I feel like, you know, I remember when I was younger, I'd, you guys would approve a single cruiser, or then it went to two, now we're doing three. So I would think a lot of these would be newer vehicles, wouldn't need quite this amount of work. And we'll say Nathan said that a lot of it is a, he doesn't like the Dodges.
They don't make them like they used to. I know that's a, that's an old saying, but they don't make them like they used to do.
But, yeah. You see that there? These on?
Yeah, they ain't bad.
No. See the jail bill? We're getting our discount.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's good.
We're gonna need that.
Yeah. If we could keep it there every month, we'd be all right.
I'll move to approve invoices as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Nothing further. I do believe in the past President Egner allowed a couple minutes for public comment. We don't have a lot of time today, but we'll allow a, there's, I'd like to keep it to one or two minutes. Is there anybody in the gallery audience that would like to say something? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned.